Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting of this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. At this time, we will convene our city council meeting for Monday, June the 3rd. And in lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce himself, beginning on my far right.
Dave Bubley, City Councilman Large.
John Jennings, District 4.
Dave, Mayor's District 5.
Anthony Davidson, District 3.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Fraser.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Ed Bell, District 2.
Barry Gieser-Stewart, District 1.
Kathy Coats, Councilwoman Large.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have two, should have two sets of minutes in front of you, one from April the 1st meeting. This time, the floor is open for questions or comments concerning the April 1st meeting, minutes only.
I personally would like to have Dan read them into, just kidding. I have read and understand them, and I make the motion that they are accepted as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Counsel, you have a set of minutes dated May the 6th, 2013. This time, the floor is open for questions or comments.
I have read the minutes, and I think that we should accept them as written.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carrying. There is no special presentations this evening. Move to petitions or comments by citizens. Only one person has signed up to speak this evening, Jane Fawn, and he requests to speak concerning General Ordinance Number 11. So, when that comes up, Jane, we'll call you up to speak. Reports from committees, boards, and commissions, Greenscape Committee.
Good evening. Tim Latimer, Beach Grove Greenscape Commission. This may be the shortest report that I've ever given. We did meet, and the only thing I have to report is we have a tentative date for the Arbor Tree, Arbor Day celebration, and that tentative date is October 8th, and that is going to be in conjunction with the high school FFA program. Chris Kaufman and Dave Miller have been in contact, and they're going to work that out. The other, the only other thing I have to report is that we have begun looking at the Emerald Ash border situation. We started inspecting trees, and we've inspected a few, haven't found anything yet, and I'm going to go out and look at a few more here when I leave tonight, and get some more trees inspected before the Pacer game comes on. And that is all I have for you. So, do you have any questions for me?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you for making it short.
Yeah, very good. All right. All right, thank you.
RDC.
Joe Griffin, RDC. Our highlights, we elected new officers, Kathy Chapel Secretary, Ron Mote Vice President, and I'm the President of the RDC. I'm going to have to learn better how to play rock, paper, scissors. So...
Can you repeat those names, please, from the start, so I can write them down? Kathy Chapel?
Kathy Chapel Secretary. Ron Mote Vice President.
Did you spell out his name?
M-O-T-E. My flunce's wrong.
Thanks, me too.
And Joe Griffin.
I got that. Thank you, Joe.
All righty. As we learned when Heather was here, we're going to have to do a whole lot of things. We have a lot of options set up. For those that didn't get, see it, that stuff is out there on the web. We didn't have a video camera, but we did have a voice recorder there, and we also had the power presentation, PowerPoint presentations that was given, so please, grab those and follow them along. It will squash one or two bugs. It's always been said about the RDC, what the RDC can and can't do. She's a lawyer with Ice Mill, so she wasn't lying about what she had to say. Most people that attended it found it informative, and some even had fun listening. We learned from Heather that we're going to have to form partnerships. That's one of the best things that we can do and hope to do. One of the partnerships we talked about at our last meeting was form a partnership with the city council. And in order to form a partnership with city council to go along with the open door requirements, or just to make sure that there isn't any open door requirements, I'm requesting that all the council meetings also include public notice for the RDC members. And in the same aspect, all RDC will have council members. So, we don't have to worry about having a forum there or any of that kind of discussion or anything else. That way, they can be held in conjunction and go right on along, and we won't have to worry about the open door laws. Because it will be publicly posted, and it will be publicly stated. So, we can, we can get up there and go about it that way, and that'd be one sign of forming a partnership with the council, that we both believe in what we have to do, because we're going to both need each other, because we both have to work together. So, that would be great. You know, what we also learned is we also need one plan. That's why partnerships are important. Every place that an RDC has gone, every place that economic redevelopment has gone, it is concerning, everybody's on board with one plan. What we also learned, too, is that at economic redevelopment, you need more than just one leg. So, if we're just relying on the RDC, we don't make it. And going from the past, we should learn from the past. They've tried their best, and they did what they thought was best. We're going to take a little different approach to things. We hope to have a guest on a monthly basis, and we hope to put them on the web so people can see them and get them out there. That way, we can start demystifying the RDC and what's out there. And the RDC pretty much touches every base of government that there is, whether it be cities, state, and federal. So, we're going to try and get the experts in and talk about RDC stuff. What we need, too, is people to show up. We have no members, and that's Beach Grove citizens. We have no council members either. I'm yelling at my employers. Hate to see you guys there. Because in order to form partnership and everything else, we all got to be on the same page, and we all got to work together. Best place to get it and do it is right there at the RDC meeting. Greg Sheets always kept said, and I believe this today, the only way that you can really get a true meaning of it is to be there. You can watch it on the web all you want, you can watch it from wherever, but the only true thing is to be there. And we have learned also from the past, like I said, successful economic redevelopment has to come from everybody, has to be everybody's input. That's the only way it's going to be successful. Us talking heads and appointed people and elected people, you know, we can say what we want, but if the people themselves don't show up to support it, then it's worthless. So, we need that kind of input. And hopefully, by bringing experts along and everything else, it'll help demystify that stuff. So, that's pretty much it. We were talking about, about that at our last meeting, and that's the directions that we're going to be heading. The past RDC meetings, you know, they, they did their best. They did what they thought. And we have learned from that, so we're trying to take a little different approach, build on what they have had, and then we want to expand on it and some more and go different directions. So, my one last thing is, go Pacers. Any questions?
What's your next meeting?
Third Thursday of the month. There are always the third Thursday of the month.
I like to have an old record every time. That way, that way they hear it often.
Okay, fair enough. I'll see you there.
Joe, do you want to have it here or the City Hall?
I'm not sure. Is City Hall going to be actually open, open enough to go? Okay, I'll, I'll send it off to the other councils, other commissioners, and see what they have to say. You know, I'm not against going, going down there at all. We can tend to at least say maybe. How's that? So, we'll, we'll see what they have to say, and I'll get with Dan as quick as I can and get it posted on the web. We hope to have a special guest. The problem is, right now, I'm trying to work with them and get them there, so if we have a guest, it's going to be a surprise. Given enough notice, we'll, we'll post who we have coming, and if they have presentations or whatever else, I'll try and get it out there on the web also, so you can bring a copy with you and know what to prepare for. Questions?
Joe, I'd just like to make a comment. I passed out to all the council people tonight, these are letters I need to send out to any taxing districts that is involved in tip, and have sent it certified mail pursuant to the annual 36 days, 7 days, 14 days, 39. I'll get you a copy of this later today, or I'll send an email tomorrow to all the RDC members. But this is something that I do on an annual basis, and...
I thought it sounded...
No, that was something different that I emailed you on today that I need, adds to the resolution, and I need a copy of it, too.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Thanks, Joe.
The Public Safety Committee did not meet in May. There was no action from the ABC. Our final report is financial.
Okay. First off, I just wanted to let everybody know, I gave each of the council people tonight a copy of the strategic fiscal plan and analysis, so you've each got a copy of it. Also, during the month of May, the clerk's offices continue to learn more about Keystone software. We have been unable to balance April yet due to a variety of issues, including problems with payroll uploads and problems with the new Keystone software. We hope to complete this task very soon, and balancing May should be much easier. The city closed on the leases for the public safety vehicles. The leases are through Regions Bank at an interest rate of 2.30, and they are a five-year lease. The fire department purchased three Tahos and one Silverado with a snow blade. Police Department purchased four Tahos. Majority of our bond payments come due this month, with the exception being the RDC and the 2002 Go Bond. I will give a full report in July on all bond payments and property tax revenues. All city debt is available for review on the website. Monthly financial reports are also available on the citywide website. We will begin preparation for the 2014 budget in July. The last half of the year will be really busy. I have distributed for review copies of the revised fiscal plan prepared by Jeff Peters, and as soon as it's completed, I will post that on the city website also. Bank statements are all on the city website as of today, and our website report, for the month of May, we had 25,019 hits and averaged 807, a high of 1,293 on May 28th. It normally drops off a little bit when it warms up, but I'd say overall, we're averaging over 1,000 hits on a daily basis. But the homepage is the number one page with the police department, second this time. The fire department was third. So, it's kind of interesting to track some of this, but there's some good information on the city website, and I hope everybody goes to it. Basically, any finances in the city are on there, even some past information. We're trying to build that up as we go all the time. That's basically all I have.
Questions for the clerk? Now, we'll move to Mayor's Liaison Report. Carry on.
Well, thank you for having me, Mayor and councilors. You've probably heard a little bit about World Sports Park this week. World Sports Park, we keep getting slammed as being a $6 million cricket stadium, but it's the mayor putting sports fields in a park. We're putting sports fields in a park. That's what you would do. Of course, we're an internationally known sports city, so I was just in keeping with what we've been doing for the last 20, 30, 40 years since Sudnut, probably, or Luger. August 1st, at Lucas Oil Stadium, we will have two international soccer giants coming here to play, and we are getting slammed with ticket requests. It's a huge thing. What's the number one sport in the world? Is it NFL, NBA? No, it's soccer. Plus, number two? Not NBA, it's not the Golf Channel. Number two's cricket. And we, there's nowhere in this country that it's on a major level. But it's played every week in Indianapolis on a makeshift field, so we're going to have it here and draw people in. This week, we've had grandkids from Muncie, and our, our grandson is on a traveling soccer team, and boy, do they spend money. Have you been on a traveling teams? That's what we're going to have coming here, spending their money here. So, that's a good thing for all of us. Neighbor Power, we've talked about before, but it's still on the table. October 12th, at Marion University, where they're starting a medical school. So, consider doing that. Follow us on @IndyMnLs, you guys on Twitter. I'm not. I don't want to be, but we still put things out there. Tomorrow is the grand opening of Med Express right down the street. How many of you are going to be there? You've been invited to Beach Grove Chamber from 10 to 12, and at 11, they're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony. So, come on down, Beach Grove people from Beach Grove Chamber will be there, 10 to 12. Hill Valley is having a garage sale, 6, 7, and 8. Wannamaker Street Fair, right over here in Wannamaker. How many of you know where Wannamaker is? You know where Acton is? Well, some of you do. We just had a great Memorial Day parade in Acton. I mean, it was a really good parade. The mayor was in it and a bunch of folks, Senator Miller and a bunch of folks were there. And Wannamaker is on Southeastern Avenue, and it's a very good event as well. There'd be a classic car show there with, I don't know, 100 cars. It's, it's a nice event. They will close Southeastern Avenue, and the whole of Southeastern Avenue for multiple blocks will be all street fair. So, there's Democrats there, there's Republicans there, there's all kinds of people there. Come on out. The City of Southport is having a flag retirement ceremony on Flag Day. Come on down at 7:30 PM at the Southport Park, and they will officially retire flags as it's the prescribed, prescribed way, which is to burn the flags. Interurban Trail, you guys heard about that, I assume. It's down Madison Avenue is the south part of that. You're certainly welcome to be involved in any of those things. This is about, you know, federal and state program about mortgage foreclosures and preventing foreclosures. And, let's see, we've had other things done here, but right now, the big thing is your projects. So, I see you finished one section of Main Street, and you're working on the next section. How's it going?
It's going pretty good. I think the base, too, was a six days ago. No layers until the fourth.
Excellent.
It's also paid.
You know that they did move up the state fair earlier this year. That moves all the county fairs up earlier. So, the county fair is going to be earlier this year. It'll be June 22nd to 26th, if I recall. So, if you've got things to get involved in that, you need to bump them up earlier. Mr. Mayor? No?
No. Question? Carry on.
Well, I have a question. Why would you just get your kids up?
Had nothing to do with me. I don't know why.
The schools, they're trying to hit the, while the kids are not in school.
School calendar.
But it's like, it affects the lifestyle of the national person.
In particular, the produce, yeah. It's not going to be ready that early. So, we won't have any thousand-pound pumpkins this year. Okay.
I will say, they got Southport Emerson Dunn down there, by the way.
It's close. I haven't been there this week, so I don't know.
Well, they got pending strikes.
Excellent.
It's a lot nicer to drive.
There is another stretch that's on the, the calendar for this year that should be from south of there, down at the county line, where they're going to do some paving around South County Line in Arlington and that area, so...
But they went to the bridge.
Yeah, right. Yeah. That was something that 20-some years ago, when, when the state came to us, the people said, "Well, we want you to build a bigger bridge because we're going to outgrow this." And the state said, "Oh, no. No, we don't want to do that. We'll build another one beside it." Right.
How's your big dig going on part for your sanitation system for Southport?
You know, that is fabulous. Now, you talk about the deep rock tunnel connector.
So, yeah.
Yeah. They're two miles into that now, and there's no complaints at all. They went down 250 feet in the limestone and going sideways in a boring, boring machine. There are eight people that ride in that 24 hours a day, and it's just vibrating all day long. I can't imagine how the dentist will do good out of that, you know, getting all the fillings and loosen out of your head. That, that's a project I would not want to do.
I do.
You do?
I would. I'd love it.
Gary, what was that?
Yes, sir.
Where the public works, Frank was very important. Or they did a purchase. They made Perkins from random sound to the man drive.
Okay. Frank's doing a good job of getting involved with us now, so...
So, that was, I needed, maybe it was really nice.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you.
Mike, I have your Madison Avenue trail path copy.
Thank you.
That concludes reports. We'll go to unfinished business. Counsel, first order is General Ordinance Number 9, 2013 is up for third reading. I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety. Dan?
General Ordinance Number 9, 2013 is an ordinance that amends already 13 of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual pursuant to drug testing for employees. Whereas all persons employed by the City of Beach Grove are considered professional employees who provide dedicated service to the citizens of Beach Grove, and whereas employees must be held to a higher standard and are often seen in the public light, and whereas random drug testing is very prevalent in the workforce and presents a positive image for everyone, and whereas some employees are currently not subject to random drug testing. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend that Article 13 of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual to address random drug testing of all employees hired by the City of Beach Grove. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendment to be included in Article 13 of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual and be carried out as such. Article 13 Safety, at Section 6 Random Drug Testing. All persons employed by the City of Beach Grove shall be subject to unannounced random drug tests. Each department head shall be instructed to carry out the random drug tests in their respective department, which shall include themselves. Tests shall be conducted by a medical clinic approved by the City of Beach Grove. The costs associated with random drug testing shall be paid for by the City of Beach Grove. The city shall not bear any cost. Employees directed to be tested shall be driven to the testing site unless the medical clinic conducts the testing on site. Failure to have a drug test conducted within two hours of notification shall constitute failure unless otherwise authorized by the department head. Tests that result in a positive response shall preclude the employee from returning to work. Such employee shall be placed on administrative leave until further consultation has concluded. Test conclusions shall be given to the respective department head of whom the employee is assigned to. If an employee declines to be tested, the findings shall be a positive test. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires that random drug testing measures take place. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to the above listed amendment. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, tested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Counsel, you've heard General Ordinance Number 9 on third reading. Ask the motion to approve is presented.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same side. Before it's introduced, I'll ask for FOP to have him speak. He's asked to speak on this matter. And Chief, do you want to, Chief Forson, do you want to speak also?
Yes.
Okay.
This is... Good evening.
Good evening.
I think we all know each other by now. I just got this a couple days ago, and I've been looking over it. And I want to start off by saying that I agree that public safety employees should be held to a higher standard. Completely agree with that. But I think what's happened here is, I, I know the meaning behind it, and I think it's a good meaning for the blood draw, but I think this whole process has been oversimplified. It's just not that simple. I think what's been forgotten is that police officers have take-home privileges for their vehicles. So, these accidents might not always be happening on duty. Plus, we are able to drive to any surrounding county, surrounding Marion County. So, I might have an accident up in northern Boone County, and I might have my family with me. And according to this ordinance, now, as my supervisor now have to come to Boone County, but even after taking a PBT and registering a 000 and showing no other signs of impairment, I still have to be taken back down to Marion County to a hospital for a blood draw. What's going to happen to my car while I'm gone? What's going to happen to my family while I'm gone? These are some of the questions that probably didn't come up, and I, I'm not sure who authored this, whenever this was authored. Those are problems that we have to try to get past if we're going to implement something like this. We can't just leave an officer family stranded up in Boone County, because they have to take their officer back down to Marion County, because I'm assuming that the city's going to contract with the hospital to have these blood tests done. I'm assuming it's probably going to be St. Francis, because that's who we always use. So, if I'm way up in Boone County, have an accident, I'm going to have to come all the way back down to southern Marion County to have a blood draw done. And once that blood draw is done, now what? Is the supervisor going to have to draw me all the way back up to Boone County to get my family? What's going to happen to my car? Is it going to be stuck up in an unsecured location while I'm getting a blood draw? Is the city going to tow it back to Beach Grove? And if they tow it back to Beach Grove, and I'm not allowed to drive my car until the results come in, who's going to take me home? Am I still going to get paid while I'm on administrative leave or waiting for the test results? And if so, that means someone has to take my spot on the road, which might mean that we're paying overtime to cover me while still paying me. We don't, we don't disagree with the PBT. That, we're fine with that. But I, I think there's some problems with this that are going to raise our head, and I, I don't think it's a good fit for the city. Plus, excuse me, if it happens on duty within the city, you're probably going to have at least three officers out of service for that one incident. You're going to have the officer who's involved in the accident, the supervisor who's going to have to report to the scene and take him for the blood draw, and you're going to have to have a third officer out of service just to do the accident report. And most days on middle shift, we only have four officers working. That's going to leave one officer to cover the entire city while we're dealing with this. And on day shift, they run with three minimum. That means every single officer is going to be busy just for that. Where if you have a PBT and it shows 000 and there's no other signs of impairment, that should be good enough. But instead, now we're going to have three officers out of service just for this one Another thing that came up is, what's the cost going to be to the city? Because as you know, police officers spend about, I'd say 60% to 70% of their time driving. That's what we do. So, yeah, we're gonna get into accidents, and last year, how many accidents did we have?
I think we had thirteen.
Thirteen accidents. And we've been looking at costs associated with these tests, where it can be anywhere from eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars per test. So, that's what it's gonna cost the city every time we have a blood draw. So, if we have thirteen, just thirteen last year, just for the police department, at a thousand dollars, that's thirteen extra, thirteen thousand extra dollars the city has to come up with to pay for those tests. Another thing that, that hasn't come up is, what are the legal ramifications of this? Is this going to be considered only a work policy? Or if an officer or any employee, 'cause this is for every city employee, once you show signs of impairment, it now becomes a criminal matter? And so, how is that gonna be dealt with by the city? And another thing is, there's no repercussions in this ordinance for someone refusing to take this test. So, what if my supervisor shows up and says, "Hey, take this PBT." "No, I won't do it." There's nothing in here that says what's gonna happen to me if I say no. So, why shouldn't I? I think this was written quickly, it didn't take into consideration our take-home privileges, it didn't take into consideration some legal ramifications, and we would ask that this be tabled until we have further discussions on it.
I have to agree with, uh, James, and also, we're not talking just the police department, we're talking the fire department. I've talked to the fire chief and the assistant chief. They might have one person that can drive an engine and nobody else. So, obviously, the driver has to be tested, they're gonna leave a fire engine sitting somewhere until they get another driver. The street department is the same way. As you look at it, our policy says this one, which is good. The police department investigates and has investigated any city vehicle that is in a crash. Our officers are trained to see impairment and let us do our job. My suggestion is on this, on Section B, Part Two, take all that out about a blood test and put in to where each department has to have a policy that is approved by the Board of Works. And let those policies generate what each person needs to do and not make law or ordinance that dictates, other than a PBT. When our officers go out to the scene, we already do it for the police department. Every officer that's involved in a crash, his fault or not, he has to take a PBT. And we think that every city employee that's driving should also. We like that part of it. But let the department heads generate what they need as far as policy in this section too. Take out the blood draw, 'cause if you're making somebody do a blood draw, if they're off-duty, they get paid. They actually, because you're mandating it, that officer is on overtime now. But let us, as far as the police, do our professional job and investigate further if needed after a PBT. So, I would go along with the sergeant and suggest it be tabled and make improvements into this ordinance.
I, I, this is what I'm saying, I, I, I also recall, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, the discussion that was brought up, that he said they supported, he said we're already in the eligibility of our take-or-nothing.
I think he's in support of the ordinance generally, just not this section that says a blood draw is mandated.
Now, I'm, I'm completely in support for a PBT, that's fine. Uh, we do that anyway. And like he said, we, i- if, if you register a zero-zero-zero on PBT and you show no other signs of impairment, then there's really no need for a blood draw.
I agree, I understand, but I drove with the other impairment.
I'm sorry?
Other impairment.
I don't think, you, if you're talking about drugs, there are impairments, and our officers are trained, they're actually certified by the academy and certified through continued training that shows up, that talk with somebody, watch their eyes, their movements, uh, and these are the impairments that go from the city mandating to a criminal investigation. And if you mandate that we do a blood test, it's possible, and Craig might be able to fill in a little bit more, that it might impede the criminal investigation on the police department to what we can do, to what the city does. The, there's a, a ruling out as far as the police department called the Garrity Rule, the advisement. If an officer is mandated by city policy to go out and take a test, the Garrity Rule comes into that, nothing criminal can be pulled from that information because Garrity comes in to it. So, you, it doesn't apply to everybody, but it does apply to the police, this Garrity Rule. So, if we don't impose the Garrity with this, which you're mandating, the Garrity Rule would have to come into effect. And we're suggesting you don't mandate the, uh, blood draw. You, you substitute that, it's up to each department to have a policy.
And state law already says that if you're involved in a serious bodily injury accident or fatality, that you have to go for a blood draw. That's every citizen, that's not just, yeah. So, if that happens, you're going. So, and, and that's state law, so you can't get around that. So, I mean, think about it, i- if I'm driving in my police car, and I get, I, I'm in, sitting in a parking lot, and I get rear-ended by someone pulling out of a parking spot, now all of a sudden I have to go for a blood draw? I mean, it doesn't make sense. I mean, I think there are certain, you know, situations where it's just not, yeah, and you can't just do a blanket policy that says, "Hey, you're in an accident, you're going for a blood draw." Well, you know, another thing about police officers is, well, think about this. We have annual training that we have to go to, and some of that training is out of state. Well, we drive our police cars. Are you gonna send a supervisor out of state to take that accident report or do that PBT? I mean, th- these are things that obviously weren't thought of when this ordinance was written. I mean, we've driven as far away as Mississippi before, Washington DC, and if we have an accident out there, th- this is not, this is not gonna work.
Now, PBT is pretty common for the police department, and if you get in a crash, you can request that an officer comes out and issues you, whether it be in Washington DC or Seattle, Washington. The blood test is a little bit different. I, I guess I would have to suggest that we have a blanket policy as far as who covers it, but I don't know if other hospitals or labs would do that. But it, I'm pretty certain that if we get into an accident, police fires, street department out of the city or out of Marion County, that an officer's not gonna say, "Ah, you just go home, you're drunk." They're, they're gonna investigate it, and they're gonna do their job, same as we would. There, there's, this time of year, this age, there's no breaks. You either do it right, or you're gonna get it.
Well, I guess, myself, I must, I probably didn't read it as far enough, because I really love it, just for all duty.
It doesn't say anywhere on it?
On duty, off duty. And I, and I would, I wouldn't understand that myself, and you guys are the ones who use most of the city vehicles, I guess you'd say.
Right.
And I don't, yeah, I don't agree with myself. I don't understa- and the other thing I don't agree with, and this is the way I'm reading this, I mean, everybody has a fingerprint. I mean, a thousand-dollar fingerprint, is that gonna be included in this?
According to this, any accident.
Any accident, and that's what, yeah.
Like my example, if I'm sitting in a parking lot, somebody backs into me, it might be just a scratch in my car, on my bumper, but according to this...
And, and the way I see it, I think, you try to avoid this, officer bizarre type situation.
Right.
And not just because he was police, I, I remember a bad, a fire truck got into a bad accident.
Correct.
Right. What rules were followed there?
Well, with the situation.
I mean, was it not a bad?
State law would've taken over and said...
bizarre state law did take effect, but the law had changed a few months prior, and the officers didn't realize that the lab, who always did it for, within state law, had changed. And by knowing the law, you operate under that. It was unfortunate that they didn't realize that it had changed. But you've got people that do this, and they call the fact team. Those guys come out and they do every suspected drunk-driving fatality or serious injury. And they are, a prosecutor comes out, uh, these guys, they do it unfortunately weekly. So, if they missed it, that's bad.
I guess I don't understand why, I mean, if there are rules and regulations now, why would we, especially for a small accident, why would we want to waste our time getting to a PBT?
I think that public opinion is big, and we're for that, and a PBT starts and could end any investigation. If the person blows into it, tests nothing, but you're awesome talking to that person, you're getting mannerisms, maybe, uh, he had a head injury, and you start looking at him, you go, "There's something wrong."
Yeah.
"Let's get him checked out or her." And that, that starts something different, you call for a medic and do that. But you, you require a PBT, you get up close and personal with the person, and you, you can do your investigation that way, and it's not imposing on somebody unreasonable.
Now, PBT is, is not as intrusive as a blood draw. For a private citizen, in order for me to get a blood draw for a private citizen, I basically have to develop probable cause, apply for a search warrant, have a judge sign it, and then I can get a blood draw. That's how intrusive it is, and that's why the state, like Slaters and the, and the courts have said, "No, in order to do it, you need a search warrant." So, I'm fine with PBT.
Questions or other comments?
I would just like to say that I was also contacted by a member of your department with several concerns.
I'm sorry, can I hear you?
I was also contacted by a member of your department with several concerns, and it did raise some, some question, but, uh, the question that kinda just stirred up my mind right now is that, is there anything that's in this that you guys don't apply for state law? Or is there anything, is there anything in here that's not in state law?
I guess not in the state law.
I mean, i- is it required for a PBT under state law?
No.
For the police?
No.
Okay.
Question. So, that, um, if you were in Boone County with your family, are you talking about, like, your personal car or your toll?
No, we're allowed to have a family car, toll car.
It's a, it's a city-owned vehicle. We go to Boone Cal- County for training. They have an outdoor shooting range, and we can go there. But it also, the donor counties, we're allowed to go. If I go down to Green Park Mall, there's, I'm closer to there than Washington's way. That's the, one of the reasons that we're allowed to do that, is that it's more reasonable. But it's for any city-owned vehicle, not a personal vehicle, that you have to take this PBT if your ordinance passed.
I have a question too. So, you're asking that police officers, please, on how to stand for any practices?
No, we're talking about city employees involved in driving this vehicle. When I talk about this, I ain't talking just about workers, and we are also, I am asking that they take part of that and replace it with every department that has a policy for drug alcohol testing, but it's not part of the ordinance, what a city has to do. Let the PBT stand, and then let the police officer who hasn't come out to investigate this, let them do this job. There is policy that police department has to investigate any, any city vehicle involved in the accident. And we go forward with this ordinance and says PBT, that's it. Police department already has a policy that PBT has to give to every police officer. I might suggest this, if every city employee that's riding a city vehicle that's involved in a crash, then they got the blood test, does it causes some problems when the police investigate and handle it, time and cost. If a person shows impairment, let the police officer do his job and handle that impairment efficiently.
And I, I thank you for bringing up all of the, uh, circumstances that we failed to look into regarding that, and things that we hadn't thought about, um, in detail. So, I, I make a motion to table this, uh, until we come to some sort of agreement with what these gentlemen have suggested.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. It is tabled until further notice. I'll defer to the council president concerning RDC and merit board appointments. Ed?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. Uh, since it, during the holiday and so forth, I, I believe, uh, there was proper time to interview, uh, many of the, uh, people, Lauren Milton, Ben Templeton, Don Webb. I, I noticed that, uh, some of their information wasn't picked up in the box. And I really would like to have, have the invest people on board on the RDC, so I think we wait until the next council meeting. And did you, John, have any other appointments?
No, I'm thrilled with the two that we have.
Okay, all right. But I believe we'll just, uh, wait till the next council meeting.
Okay, so the July first council meeting, uh, the council, uh, will be making appointment to the RDC, and the council will be making appointment to the fire department merit board. All right, move on to new business, including... Big pardon? No, it was tabled, going to the next meeting. Are you done, President?
Yes.
Should we, should we vote on it?
On table.
Table it?
Uh, I guess we can.
Motion to table?
How much is to table?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Okay, six to one, it's tabled until July first meeting. Under new business, including the introduction of ordinances or resolutions. General Ordinance Number Twelve, two thousand thirteen, Eighth Street traffic matter. Chief? Short, you wanna comment on Eighth and Cleveland? Uh, the residents down here are requesting, it's a two-way intersection now, two-way stop, they're requesting it be, uh, turned into a four-way stop.
As Mayor replied, it's, uh, Eighth and Cleveland. Cleveland has stop sign east and west, Eighth does not, and Eighth is a nor- is a one-way north street until you pass Cleveland, and then it becomes a two-way street with vehicles on both sides, sometimes, uh, seeing traffic both ways can become a hazard, and it would be my suggestion that it, it becomes a, a four-way stop for the safety of the people in the area.
You say there's a one-way in what direction?
It's, there are stop signs going east and west on Cleveland, and Eighth Street is one-way north, doesn't have a stop sign, and it's a two-way going south.
Got it, got it.
So, it's, I think it would be a, a safety, a better idea if it's a four-way stop sign, four-way stop.
four-way stop.
Which district is this, sir?
It's probably, it's, it's why that's, uh, you go back, what way back, it's, it's why that's, uh, it's a problem, I think, because our, uh, we're, we're.
But the people on the north side of Cleveland that live on Eighth, they gotta come back this way to, to get out, to get on nine or seven, so it may go both ways. So, yeah, it, it would, it would help at least draw people attention to, to be more careful.
Any other questions before the police change? No, I'll ask, uh, the clerk treasurer to read General Order Number 12, 2013, on first reading. General Ordinance Number 12, 2013 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances concerning traffic patterns on North Eighth Avenue. Whereas a citizen who resides on North Eighth Avenue has approached the city with a concern about the traffic pattern at North Eighth Avenue in Cleveland, and whereas current late traffic on North Eighth Avenue does not stop in Cleveland, and whereas parking is allowed on both sides of Eighth Avenue causing block views of this intersection, and whereas citizens who reside in that area desire to have traffic stop in all four directions at North Eighth Avenue in Cleveland. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel of the City of Beach Grove desires input from the police chief and may act upon his recommendation. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common counsel of the City of Beach Grove desires that Chapter 77, Schedule Two, Subsection A be changed to the following. Schedule Two, Subsection A, change from two-way stop eastbound and westbound Cleveland to four-way stop eastbound and westbound Cleveland and southbound and northbound Eighth Avenue. Therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel instructs the Board of Public Works and Safety to erect signs as such. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall apply only to the following intersection. Therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president and tested by the clerk treasurer and signed by the mayor. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I personally will pass this on first reading, so we can gather some more information, but I'll let it live for another month. Um, given the opportunity to go down and talk to some people, see if this is what people want.
Two sixty-one more days.
I would, several people, I would get.
Motion to approve, uh, General Order Number 12, 2013, on first reading. Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Second reading will be July first, 2013. I'll ask the, uh, next up on the, on the agenda is General Order Number 13, 2013. I'll defer to the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety. General Ordinance Number 13, 2013 is an ordinance that amends the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23, pursuant to the overnight parking of commercial motor vehicles. Whereas residents may drive commercial motor vehicles home from work, and some citizens may be on call for a period of time, including overnight, and whereas residents sometimes have deliveries made to their home requiring parking in front of their residence, and whereas service calls sometimes happen to where a commercial motor vehicle may be parked in the street for an extended period of time, and whereas emergencies may happen where a commercial motor vehicle may park on a street for an extended period of time. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the common counsel that the parking of large motor vehicles or commercial motor vehicles within the City of Beach Grove be regulated. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23 be amended as such. Delete Chapter 72, Subsection 72.23 in its entirety and replace with the following, Subsection 72.23. No semi-truck and/or trailer shall park on a city street between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. No more than one commercial vehicle of the same company per household shall park on a city street between the hours of twelve AM and six AM. Exceptions. One, vehicle operator is allowed to drive a company vehicle home. Two, operator of the vehicle is on call for his or her employer. Three, necessary for the preservation of life and property. Definitions. IC nine dash thirteen dash two dash thirty-one, commercial motor vehicle. Section thirty-one A, commercial motor vehicle means, except as provided in subsection B, a motor vehicle or combination of motor vehicles used in commerce to transport passengers or property of the motor vehicle. One, has a gross combination weight rating of at least twenty-six thousand and one pounds, including a tow unit with a gross vehicle weight rating of more than ten thousand pounds. Number two, has a gross vehicle weight rating of at least twenty-six thousand one pound. Three, is designed to transport sixteen or more passengers, including the driver. Or four, is A of any size. B, used in transportation of materials found to be hazardous for the purpose of the Hazardous Materials Transportation Act. And C, required to be flattered under the Hazardous Material Regulations 49 CFR Part 172, Subpart F. D, to include vehicles with a gross declared weight greater than eleven thousand pounds but less than twenty-six thousand one pound. Now, therefore, be it ordained that the common counsel desires to amend Chapter 72 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to commercial motor vehicles. Now, therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the common counsel, signed by the council president, tested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor. Chief, could you come back up, please?
This is, uh, the ordinance that you both presented. So, go ahead, Tom.
I, I think that, uh, the way this ordinance is written, the way that clerk treasurer read it, it, uh, is a, is enabling the police department to enforce this ordinance and still giving the citizens the right to take home a vehicle that they work for, maybe somebody uncalled. I think that it limits it to one vehicle per household, that's what it should do, not so somebody has a business that they operate out of their home or bring all the vehicles to their home. But the way the ordinance is written follows state law as far as some of the definitions and enables the police department to fairly enforce this ordinance, so it doesn't impose too much of hindrance on the citizens.
This is enforceable?
Yes.
Mr. Soul, can I interpret, do you say that this, as it's written, is something that we should know how, and everybody can, oh, I got it, if you can enforce?
The way it's written, uh, it's my opinion that we can enforce it.
I would just like to comment that the, uh, one, uh, commercial vehicle per household, um, that bothers me a little bit because I know several of my friends that, that work for multiple companies that take home commercial vehicles, maybe have one per residence, but with that said, I, the passenger, just, uh, pick it up.
I think that, uh, if you can rely on some of, uh, policeman's judgments, if it's, if it's two commercial vehicles to two different companies, I think the letter of the law can go for more reason than what that is. If you've got somebody that works for Hicks Record, and you've got somebody that works for a fire extinguisher company, obviously that it's not a business running out of it, and that's not what you want to, uh, impose upon people. You don't want to stop working and hurt them with their business.
I make a motion we pass General Ordinance Number 13, 2013, on first reading.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Thanks, Chief.
This will be heard on second reading at July first meeting. General Order Number 14, 2013, is hand handling, will be tabled until July. I forgot to include the supplement, and I apologize for that. So, uh, we'll move on to miscellaneous business, including any of the matters not already considered. There's none. Council comments to my far right, Dave?
No comment.
John?
I also have no comments this evening.
Dave?
No, I'm astounded. I don't either.
Anthony?
Uh, I would just like to say school's getting out soon, so everybody be well aware that kids are definitely out, uh, no pacers.
Ed?
Uh, thank you all for coming tonight. That looks good. Mayor?
Uh, I'll have to diddle what Anthony said and what Ed said as well, be careful with the kids, a lot of them are out playing, and, uh, like Anthony said, go pacers. And John?
Kevin?
I have a question, and it's probably showing my emails. I was halfway listening to the radio today, and they were talking about MedExpress to their newest Indiana location coming to Beach Grove.
It's for the old block road service.
And it, that is a walking medical clinic, is that?
Yes, walking medical.
Okay, 'cause I, I was just half listening to it, and then they always said the first one would be open in Beach Grove, and so, okay, I understand. Are we involved in the RDC, is there, was anyone involved in getting that going?
Not any.
Or you won't gain anything from that?
That's not even Beach Grove, Kathy.
They just call.
Right.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Sorry, and have no comment this evening. Uh, motion to adjourn.
I'll make second motion.
Second. Meeting is adjourned at eight oh one PM. Our next meeting is July the first, 2013, seven PM, at City Home.